Welcome, everybody. I call this meeting of the Cleveland Heights University Heights School District Board of Education to order Mr. Gainer the role, please.
Mr. Posh.
Here.
Mr. Register.
Here.
Mr. Silverman.
Here.
Ms. Wright.
Here.
Mr. Zucker.
Here.
I'm really happy that the gavel worked today. So, welcome, everyone. Thank you for being here tonight. Let's start with the approval of minutes from the regular board meeting of September 6th and September 14th. I need a motion, please.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion, questions, comments? Mr. Gainer.
Mr. Posh.
Yes.
Mr. Register.
Yes.
Mr. Silverman.
Yes.
Ms. Wright.
Yes.
Mr. Zucker.
Yes.
All right. And we move on to awards and recognition. I will let you be in charge.
This is the best part of the meeting. Good evening, everyone, and welcome. So, tonight, in our recognitions, we will honor our 2016 Master Teachers. The district Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources and Operations, Dr. Paul Lombardo, excuse me, is here to present these teachers and say a few words about their accomplishments. So, if you'll come up, please. And I'll leave. Don't mess with that.
I won't mess with her.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Dr. Dixon, and good evening, everybody. Tonight, we honor five accomplished professionals receiving recognition for mastery in teaching. The Master Teacher designation means that an educator demonstrates excellence inside and outside of the classroom through consistent leadership and focused collaboration. The Master Teacher also has a wealth of understanding and knowledge on his or her subject matter, is sensitive to diverse needs of students, and sets the bar high for students in an environment that allows them to achieve. Both the initial portfolio submission and the renewal process are very rigorous. This designation is truly an honor, and the district is very proud of the accomplishments of these educators we're about to introduce. So, Master Teacher, as I call your name, please come forward. You'll receive a certificate as well as a plaque that you can take back to your buildings and hang up in the building. So, it's nice to see so many of them here. First, we have Amy Bloomberg, who's a media specialist at Cleveland Heights High School, and she successfully submitted her initial portfolio this past year.
Congratulations. If you could stand up here, so you're going to get a picture with everyone afterwards. All right, next, James Miller, science teacher at Cleveland Heights High School. Mr. Miller also successfully completed his initial portfolio this past year. And now, we have three Master Teachers who have renewed their portfolios this past year. So, they've gone through this process twice, which is really amazing. We have Sarah Adair, second grade teacher at Oxford Elementary. Kimberly Beam, intervention specialist at Roxborough Middle School, and she was unable to be here today. Brad Hallam, math teacher at Delisle Options Center, and I think he was unable to be here today. And I'd also like to recognize Ms. Joyce Bukovic this year. If you can stand and actually come up, she was the Master Teacher Committee Chair and did an outstanding job. And did you want to say a couple of words?
Just congratulations.
All right. Let's congratulate all of them for their accomplishments.
Okay. Continuing our recognitions tonight, we're thrilled to announce that we now have an additional IB-authorized school in our district. Canterbury Elementary was recently named an International Baccalaureate World School. To receive the IB certification is no easy feat. After a school applies for candidacy, the IB organization works with the school on the program structure and staff training. The process is rigorous and can take several years of hard work and dedication. The IB program emphasizes action in the local community while understanding the larger world context in which our students live and function. Canterbury joins Roxborough Elementary and Roxborough Middle Schools as IB World Schools. So, at this time, I would like the principal, Dr. Erica Wickden, to come up, please. Enter IB Coordinator, Ms. Melissa Garcar. They please come up and introduce your team, and then call their names, and then we can recognize. Awesome.
Well, first and foremost, a special thank you to our IB Coordinator, Melissa Garcar. She was phenomenal. And thank you to the teachers that took the evening off and came to support and came to dinner with us before. So, I'd like to introduce them to Mrs. Kate Tahanic, who teaches first grade. Yes, come on up. Is that okay? Senora Valentino, obviously teaches Spanish. And Mrs. Abby Reyes, who teaches first grade as well. And go ahead.
Everything spelled cricket? Right. So, thanks again to Canterbury, and I would just want to add, and I said this during the convocation, when we asked Melissa to do this, she did not hesitate. She just went at it, and she got with the team and the staff, and you guys did an amazing job, and thanks to your leadership, and we look forward to having Monticello here next year with the same recognition. So, congratulations again, Canterbury. Okay, that concludes our recognition for the evening.
Congratulations, everyone. Thank you so much for all the hard work that went into this, too. I would let them take off real quietly. All right. We move on to Item C, Public Address. We have no requested audience. Statements from the audience, I just think I have the one, from Dallas Schubert about the school levy issue 109. Dallas, you've been here before, but I'll just remind you, we give you five minutes. Just sort of glance at me if you think you're getting close to it, and I'll like give you a thing, okay? So, go ahead.
Or I'll just look this way and ignore you, maybe.
Exactly. That's right.
Well, thanks for my five minutes. I appreciate it. I am Dallas Schubert, and I am a graduate of the schools and a parent in the schools. I am also co-chair of Citizens for Our Heights Schools, which is the community group that runs school levy campaigns. I'm here tonight to sort of give you an update about where we are and what we're doing. We are in the sort of heat of the campaign. Election Day is coming up fairly quickly. It's a time in the campaign where the committee and all of our many volunteers are sort of running around frantically. We want to make sure that we're doing everything we possibly can to reach as many members of the community as possible and help them understand why the issue is on the ballot and why the issue is so critical to both our schools and the community. It's a time that's filled with sort of a lot of energy and excitement. It's also a time that's filled with a fair amount of anxiety, you know, pushing towards that end date, and we won't know anything about the results of our work until we actually hit Election Day, and so there's some anxiety that comes with that. There's also a bit of frustration, to be completely honest with you. In recent weeks, we've seen increased activity from groups who oppose the school levy, who are publishing misleading and inaccurate information about the schools out in the community, information that is, quite frankly, intended to mislead the community, numbers about administrators' salaries who no longer work for the district, numbers about our graduation rate where they're really comparing apples to oranges, looking at the numbers, our old graduation rate versus our graduation rate today, completely ignoring the fact that they're comparing numbers that have nothing to do with one another, that numbers they're comparing are five-year versus four-year graduation rates, don't take into account changes in graduation requirements over that timeframe, and completely disregarding the fact that the district has actually made good strides in the area of graduation rates, and that our graduation rate is better than state average at this point. Other numbers that they sort of seem to pull out of thin air that don't align with the numbers that we see from the Ohio Department of Education, and I mention all of this not because I think that everyone in this community has to agree on everything, and not because I think that there can't be disagreement about how our schools are run or the role that they play in our community, or how we ask our community members for taxes to support our schools, because I think that those conversations are valuable, and they are reasonable. But where I get frustrated is when you have community members who have no interest in working productively with the schools, who do not feel a sense of responsibility for the school district as a public institution that we all have responsibility for, that serves all of us, whether or not we have kids in the schools, whether or not we are community members or parents within the district, that the schools serve all of us. And that's a frustrating place to sit, to see the people who really want to find fault as opposed to find solutions when they have concerns about the schools. And that leads me to my next point, which is while there is frustration, there's also an enormous amount of gratification and positive energy. One of the things that I love most about running a school levy campaign is the amount of interaction I have with members of the community as we are doing outreach. And over the last few weeks, we have been canvassing, going door-to-door, knocking on doors across the district, and speaking to residents, asking if they have any questions about the school levy, making sure that they're aware that it's on the ballot and what's at stake with this levy. And I personally, my streets for the last couple of weeks, I was walking streets up around Monticello, and door after door, when the door opened, obviously, some people don't open their doors, but the people that I talked to were overwhelmingly supportive. I spoke to two people who had kids who graduated with me from Heights High School, who have grandchildren in the schools. They see the value, they know the value of a Heights High diploma, they know the value of a Cleveland Heights, University Heights education, they saw it in their kids, they see it in their grandkids, and while they don't have money to throw around, these are people who make very clear decisions every day about where they spend their dollars and how they spend their dollars and what they spend them on, they recognize that the schools are a place that is worth their investment. It's worth it for their grandchildren, it's worth it for the community in which they own their homes, and they are willing to make that investment and to work with the schools to reach the vision for the community that I think we all hold, where we have strong schools and strong communities, stable communities, and schools that are preparing our kids for a great future. So, what we need to do is make sure that the community gets out and votes. I am completely confident that if on Election Day, the majority of this community goes out and casts their vote at the ballot box, that we will win with, thanks, Cal, that we will, I'm going to take my 30 more seconds, that we will win with flying colors, because I honestly believe that the majority of the people in this community really believe in strong schools and that strong schools equal strong communities. So, I encourage everyone to come out and join us and to help us make sure that we have as much community awareness as possible, and everyone gets out and votes, and votes yes for issue 109 on Election Day. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for all your advocacy for all of our students for many years. All right. No other statements from the audience, is that right? Okay. So, we can move on to Item D, the Superintendent's Report.
So, we have Ohio Junior Model United Nations Simulation Overnight Field Trip to Columbus, March 12th through 17th, for your approval.
All right. So, I need a motion.
So moved.
Second. Any questions, comments?
Yeah.
I remember my, sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I was going to say, my kids went through all these, I mean, they weren't participants in this, but all their friends were, and it just, this is a great thing that the middle schools do. I'm really glad to see it continuing.
My kids went through all of this, so it is a great thing.
What countries are we representing this year? Anybody know?
No.
Anyone? Yeah, Mali, UN. What countries are we representing?
Not in our list. It may be different than when our kids did it. There was the...
Do you in? Well, we don't know.
Yeah, we don't know, because remember, I know it changed somewhere in there, but...
I thought I wanted to learn something.
Yeah, our kids did it together, and I actually went with them a couple of times.
Yeah, me, too.
Yes, I remember.
I'll find out.
All right.
Yeah, let's find out, so we can get educated.
Any other questions you got? You have about this? Anybody else? All right. Mr. Gainer. Mr. Register.
Yes.
Mr. Silverman.
Yes.
Ms. Wright.
Yes.
Mr. Zucker.
Yes.
Mr. Posh.
Yes.
Okay, so I just have, also want to update the board. So, on the 21st, I had the opportunity to attend the Equal Opportunities Schools and lead higher initiative in Washington, DC, and receive a recognition to the district based on the work we've done with Equal Opportunities Schools to increase that minority students are taking AP courses. So, I was definitely honored to be there, but there was also another MCAN district that was recognized as well, Verona Schools, so I thought it was nice, over the 100 schools that were recognized, that two schools were doing this work with MCAN was recognized as well. With the 100 schools, those 100 schools, we, us included, we have 30,000 students are participating in AP and IB courses. And from our district alone, we have 284 students taking AP, 188 students taking it for the first time, and 40 of that 188 students are taking more than one course. And remember, if you recall, 30-plus students went to the AP camp this summer, so we're really excited about that initiative and really increasing the presence of our students so that they can have more rigor. We understand, and the teachers understand, that if our students are going to be prepared for college, and they will be, they have to take more rigorous material. So, we're really excited about that. I was a proud superintendent to be able to receive this recognition on behalf of the work that's been done to the high schools. So, kudos to the high school team who've been working on this initiative, and thank you again to the board and the community who's supporting this work.
Congratulations, that's great.
All right. That's it from me and the Superintendent's Report.
All right. Then we can move on to Item E, Personnel. Can I take all 1 through 6 together? All right. So, I need a motion for Items E, 1 through 6, please.
So moved.
Second. Any questions, comments? Mr. Gainer. Mr. Silverman.
Yes.
Ms. Wright.
Yes.
Mr. Zucker.
Yes.
Mr. Posh.
Yes.
Mr. Register.
Yes.
All right. We move on to Item F, Business Services, and we have Mr. O'Brien, commonly at the mic each month for us.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Zucker.
Yes, how are you?
Fantastic. If I can get this thing to work.
Welcome. All right. So, if I remember right, we can take Item F, 1, AV and C together.
Correct.
All right. So, we are going to, any motion for Items F, 1, AV and C, please?
So moved.
Second. All right. Go ahead, Mr. O'Brien, I'll let you, as soon as you get that warmed up, we'll stall by talking very slowly.
AV, I just have to hit the right button.
Just cut to commercial?
Yeah. Mark told me hit AV mutant, and I did.
Oh, joke.
Come on. Okay, one too many. It's not working. One more time. Thank you, Mark. Technology is wonderful when it works.
Are you in charge of technology at the high school, Mr. O'Brien?
I am not. Not my role.
Good to you.
What did I do?
I don't know.
Oh, there we go. Now, we're good. All right. Okay, so this evening, what you have in change orders, before I get to the change orders, let me also introduce who I have with me. I've got John Orsini from BSHM in the audience with us. I've got Scott Bindel and Fred Rogers from our construction management team at Hammond and Ozan. Boy, Gil Bane, I have just not go with names. Gil Bane and Ozan. So, anyhow, this evening, we have three change orders, only one category, existing unforeseen conditions this month, and I will show you some pictures here, $343,000, and there are some items that we have talked about previously, and this is a picture from inside the building that shows where we took the old windows out that we put in in 2005 and where the wood was that would not withstand the current 90 mile an hour wind rating that we need when we put the new windows in, so we had to replace the framing that was there and had a little bit of a change to the windows themselves. The challenge, of course, it happened 194 times. We have 194 wood windows that we had to replace, hence the large dollar value. That one was, I think, approximately $196,000. We had two issues with steel. I only have one picture for you on that, but we, change orders, 67 was structural steel beam that was inside the building that were conflicted with an existing beam. This is a picture of some other steel that we had. This was from the very front of the building. When you go in the old main entrance through the courtyard, there were two pieces of stone that sat on the left and right, and you can see where it says East Column Steel, the very dark picture of the steel. The steel wasn't doing very well. Unfortunately, we had to take the stone off of it, take the pieces and parts out around it, and then put it back in so that we know our building will be there for a very long time. And those are unforeseen condition issues for this month in change orders 66, 67, and 68. So, I only had a couple of pictures, again, the unforeseen conditions issue. So, questions or comments about those three?
Well, I mean, we went through this in the board subcommittee meeting, and really, I mean, if we were able to keep the 70 mile an hour wind rating.
90.
I know it's 90 plus now, but if it was what it was, I think 70, I'm unsure what the number was, but I know it was less. If we were able to keep that, I think that would be a whole different story. But, I mean, we had no places to attach the windows, and, you know, with wind ratings, so...
Yeah, and the issue we had was, we go, the, whatever, excuse me, whatever they put in 2005, I think we can, the root cause of this goes back even to '72, where they really just hacked out what was there, gutted it out, put the new one, they framed it up, and then, because the windows before were on the, if you remember, were bolted to the outside, so it really didn't make a difference how the framing was done, and then whatever they put in in '05, the current codes, theoretically, those windows wouldn't meet current specs, so... Well, it's interesting. We had problems from time to time in this building, you know, with water infiltration, and it was like, the windows were operating okay, you know, but this was part of the problem that, again, that we weren't aware of, and we had similar problems at the middle schools because all three buildings were done at the same time, and so there was a bigger problem going on. But you're right, Eric, it goes back even further to the first time that the original windows were replaced in the '70s. That was not done in a manner that, certainly, we wouldn't do it that way today. And then, the second one, I think, basically, for reference point, was the columns, was the two portico, the two columns of the portico, which goes to the masonry, is that it's a high, highly, it's like when they have the signs on the bridge, the bridge freezes before the road. You've got atmosphere on all four sides of that column for the last 90 years, the water penetrates the masonry. And again, this is an issue we've had, again, with our building envelope. Water penetrates over 90 years, the steel doesn't do so well. If we find that there's the potential that we might have a structural issue, we don't want to assume it's going to be okay. We bring the structural engineer in. He does an assessment of the steel, because if the steel is, if there's 85 to 90 percent of the steel is still there, we wouldn't replace it. We only replace it if it's to the point where, again, there's the potential for a problem. And your third one, I think, was, memory serves, again, what was built differed from the drawings, is that correct? Yeah, there was an as-built issue with respect to how close two beams were inside the building. One was supposed to stay, one was supposed to go, and you couldn't get one out without taking parts of the other one out, and then we had to backfill parts of it. So, again, it's the challenge of documenting what was built, you know, in the '20s and '30s and the additions. Again, obviously, we do a lot different today. We have extreme documentation of everything we've put in this building, but we had to rely on those, when I say we, the folks on BSHM's team had to rely on that information to create documents that, again, there were things that were there that we didn't know and wouldn't know till we started tearing it apart. And due to the, shall we say, shall we say, slow gestation process on these numbers, these have already been calculated into numbers. That's correct. We've already seen, so what we're doing is, we're finally acting on something that's been, we knew, we've known about these numbers for quite some time then, correct? That's correct.
Questions from anyone else?
Yes. Was there also a replacement on the west entrance of the building?
We did not have the level of problem on the west entry that we had at the east. The, well, the north entry went away. The west entry, again, most of that was demolished. This is, the entry where we had this problem was because we were keeping that old main entrance. So, stuff that we kept, there's not a lot of the other entries that we kept. In fact, I'm trying to think if there's another, there isn't another entry we kept. This is the only one we kept. Okay.
You basically implied this, but just to be explicit, when you said the problem with the window frames, you said times 194, 194, you said, right?
Correct.
So, you're saying that all 194 windows had the same, similar issues?
Yes.
I almost said the same. Okay, great, because, you know, just to be explicit about it. And then, also, it would be accurate to say, in terms of the portico, is the fact that this is one of the reasons why we need the money that we keep for building maintenance year after years, because you need to do things like tuck pointing and all, because that protects the things behind the facade.
Right. Work you can do on the building envelope will help maintain the integrity of it. If you're not doing tuck pointing, if you're not doing that upkeep, which, again, becomes very expensive because of the huge surface area you have, you know, it's just like your roofs. You know, you can replace a part of a roof or the whole roof, half a million, 100,000, what do you want to spend, but it's part of that allocation of capital spending.
Look back to one of the reasons why we even went down this entire path of a master facilities plan, it's because some of those different maintenance issues were becoming so expensive, we couldn't keep up with them, so then it became a matter of choices. And so, now, that's one of the reasons why having these new buildings will also help in that way as well.
No question.
All right. I have nothing else. I'll say what else is, no? All right. Mr. Gainer. Ms. Wright.
Yes.
Mr. Zucker.
Yes.
Mr. Posh.
Yes.
Mr. Register.
Yes.
Mr. Silver.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I have, before we move on to the next item, Mr. Bindel, I'll get to the right slide, Mr. Bindel from the Gil Bane Building Company, I got that correct, will come up and show you some pictures of the progress of the construction of the high school, if you don't mind, before the next item.
This is your new Cleveland Heights High School, as it stood about two weeks ago. You see, we've got a lot of the windows in the facade now, and we've got the clock tower scaffold, which I'll show a few more close-ups of the clock tower as I get on in this. If you remember from last week, we saw some of the photos of the orange pieces, which were the spray foam. This is your thermal and moisture barrier over the facade, and then the brick clads around that, so the parts that aren't done yet are going to be a mixture of brick and stone that we don't have completed yet, but that will be completed in the next month here. And as we zoom in a little bit from the courtyard, you can see as we get, I'm not sure why this is smaller now, but there we go. As you see, you just see a closer-up view here, and when you get up next to the building, you can really see that the stone has all been cleaned, the brick has all been cleaned, the failed masonry joints have all been tuck pointed, so the skin is ready to stand for a good, long time, just like it did the first time. Inside the building, you see this is one of the classrooms, this is one of the first classrooms we're building out. You'll see that we've got drywall on, we've got paint on, we've got windows in, plenty of natural light, we've got ceiling grids started, and we're about to put devices, and we're going to go ahead and put some ceiling tiles in, too, to make sure that this room, this is actually our benchmark room, where we install everything first so that everyone understands what we're getting, and if we need to make any last-minute changes, we can. And then, we move into one of the class, a few of the classrooms that don't have the side windows, the windows on the side of the building. These are the chemistry labs in the middle of the classroom, on either side of the, excuse me, in the middle of the school, on either side of the auditorium, so because they didn't have the windows in the walls, because these are not exterior, they have skylight. because these are not exterior, they have skylights. And you get plenty of natural light overhead light and a nice spiral galvanized ductwork, which is going to remain exposed. This will get... This space will get dressed up a lot as it gets finished out with drywall and painted. But it will have exposed, I should say, a lack of ceiling exposed structure as you look up to the skylights. And this is one of the ways I like to celebrate technology a little bit. So, this right here is an old lattice frame girder truss. 90 years old, million rivets in the thing. And you'll see that it's got a... You see that it's got a little spot on it, a target on it. We have these peppered throughout the structure. A lot of them are falling off now. But at the time, what they were for is for reference points for the laser scan because there's no way you can coordinate this amount of heating piping, ductwork, sprinkler piping, plumbing piping. You can't coordinate that much... That amount of new utilities in an old structure that was never designed to have... To be crammed this full without hitting everything. So, nowadays, we prefabricate things. The ductwork comes out in 10-foot segments with all the fittings pre-done, pre-tested. So, we laser scan the entire existing building structure so that we were able to design and fabricate as much of this offsite as we can. That way, when it is time to install, you can install it faster and make up some of the time we lost for things like the unforeseen soils and some of these unforeseen structural issues.
This over the auditorium?
This is over the auditorium, yeah, above the art space. And moving on, this is a view of the glue laminated deck along with the... Excuse me. The tug-and-groove deck with the glue laminated timbers under it. This is the natatorium ceiling. This is what you're going to be looking up to when you're in the pool. And obviously, there's going to be ductwork and lighting in here. But by and large, the wood expanse will be highly visible. It's a great-looking space when everyone makes their way into it. And here is the clock tower. And this are the... Since this picture was taken just, I think, Monday, the... This scaffold's been taken down to about here. So, as you drive by Cedar tomorrow or whenever else you make your way down Cedar, you'll see an even better, more... Less interrupted view of the clock tower than you see here. And you'll see a quick close-up up here. This was taken from the scaffold. You can see that all the original details are still there, milled out of new material, ready to withstand as long as the building's able to stand under it. A new clock face with the historic numerals on it. It's still going to be backlit. We're also going to have lighting on the front side of it, which you can see some of them. You can barely see them. The architect did a nice job of hiding the light fixtures. This little gray strip here is a light fixture that's going to shine up on the brand-new copper dome. It's going to patina naturally over the years. And that's... I think that's all of... I think that's it. Are there any questions about the construction as it stands? I know most of you look at it at some point during the day.
Where are we on the windows for the building envelope? Are we still on schedule?
Yes. We're tracking for November enclosure. And where we can't make the window dates on the back, we're going to have to use temporary enclosures to keep the space conditioned.
And then, the two stairwells that we got the insulation's visible. Are you going to be able to do the masonry on that before winter? Or is that going to be...
Yes. Yes. Because as we... We're almost done with the structural masonry in the north half of the building. And as soon as that's done, it's going to be all hands on the masonry veneer to button it up.
The same thing for the two, the east and west doors, too, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, cool.
Yes.
I think I said this to you last time you came. I can't thank you enough for coming and for bringing these things. And you're invited every month. So, please bring pictures. Not just because it's good news. It just helps everybody to see what's going on. There's no substitute for pictures, you know. Thanks so much for...
Yeah, no problem.
Mr. O'Brien, do you have something else before I...
You can move on to the next item.
Thank you very much. Item F2, I need a motion, recommendation to approve toward a contract to HWH Architects Engineers Planters Incorporated.
So moved. Second.
All right. Questions, comments?
We went through a process to invite some firms to provide a proposal for us to help us in our relocation planning. Obviously, the job of moving into the new high school at the same time we move the middle schools out, very complex. So, the folks at HWH were the most qualified and gave us a very fair price. And that's what the base of this proposal is. And Terry Engel from HWH is here with us this evening, principal at HWH, if you have any questions about the specifics. But they're going to help us make sure this goes seamlessly.
Questions, comments, anyone?
The only thing I'll say is that, as I've said in our other meetings, the more is... From between the high school and the two middle schools, I understand there's a cost benefit. I think is the more of our furniture that we currently have that is usable, that we can reuse, the more happier I'll be. Of course, conversely, I understand there's costs. So, but I think we have plenty of good furniture that we hopefully can reuse to save us some money.
One of the tasks, Eric, that HWH is on their scope of work is to evaluate all of our furniture.
Yeah, great.
And I'd also like to add to the board that one of the reasons this position was so critical because this will be our first time doing a major move.
Sure.
And we really wanted some expert so we wouldn't pull our own district resources, you know, people. So, that's why we were happy that this company would come in and really help us. And yes, Eric, they're going to do a thorough evaluation of the historic furniture pieces.
I see a whole lot of... I see a whole lot of furniture looks really good.
All right. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you in advance, Mr. Engel. Mr. Gainer, the role, please.
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Mr. Silverman?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
And now, I say thank you in advance, Mr. Engel. Probably should have waited for that.
Thank you.
All right. So, we'll move on to item F3, recommendation to approve quarterly contracts. Any motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Any questions, comments? Mr. Patkak is here, in case you have anything. Do you have anything you need to say?
I have nothing that I need to say, unless you have questions.
All right. Mr. Gainer, the role, please.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Mr. Silverman?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
All right. Item 4, donations. I'm going to split off the first three and the last one. So, I need a motion for item 4A, B, C, and E.
So moved. Second.
All right. Any questions, comments?
Except, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Is correct. All right. Mr. Gainer, the role, please.
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Mr. Silverman?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
All right. Item 4D, let me get a motion, please, and then I'll explain.
So moved. Second.
All right. Item 4D is a donation from the Alumni Foundation. Eric, Silverman, and I are both on the Alumni Foundation. So, I believe we're both going to abstain from this vote. And that's the reason why, just so you know. So, any... If anyone has any questions or comments?
How many votes do we need?
Three.
Do we, even when you abstain?
So it's a...
Thing, I'm not on the Alumni Foundation.
That would be... We're not invited. All right. Mr. Gainer?
Mr. Silverman?
Well, hold on a second. So, it's a $30,000 donation that's going toward the clock tower.
It's the first of three donations. The foundation has to unwind their investments. So, there'll be a $30,000 donation, another $30,000, and then $40,000 coming the first of January. So, it'll be $100,000 total.
Really phenomenal.
Yes. Mr. Gainer, the role now.
And Mr. Silverman?
Yeah. I'm abstaining.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Zucker?
Abstain.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Okay. And again, thank you, one and all, for all the donations. All right. We'll move on to item G, finance. All three together. So, I need a motion for items G1 through 3, please.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Gainer, you have anything you'd like to say?
I do. So, we have an updated five-year forecast. The latest iteration has actual numbers for the last school year. So, that's the major change with the forecast that you see here. We have, if you'll recall, this new requirement from the auditors where we have activity... Student Activity Fund budgets and purpose statements that every student activity fund has to submit. And then, they have to follow those throughout the course of the year or amend them as they change their purpose or budget. So, we have those listed here, you authorizing me to accept those. And I do have all of them here as well, if you had anything specific you wanted to see with those. The last is a new item, resolution to approve a general schedule of records retention and disposition. So, you... We have traditionally followed the Auditor of State's schedule of records retention informally. But you'll recall with our... One of our more recent meetings with Sue Hastings, as legal counsel, she suggested that we both have the board formally adopt that and add an item in there for transient records. So, that is at the back end of this schedule of records retention disposition. So, other than that, it is the standard Auditor of State schedule that we have, again, traditionally followed. So, those are the items that I have for your approval tonight.
Is that retention schedule something we have to do each year?
You can do it each year, as long as you do it at least once, though. That's the main thing. It's never formally been adopted by the board. So, once it is, it'll stay and remain in place until you would... I would foresee, if we had any changes, there's a records commission that's made up of the Board President, Superintendent, and Treasurer that meets... Is supposed to meet once annually and review and recommend to the board if there are any changes to that. So, is the possibility that you'll see it every year, or it could stand as it is? And again, you'll see, you know, at the very end of that, the final item on there is this transient records item that we've added.
Other questions, comments? Mr. Gainer?
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Mr. Silverman?
Yes.
I did have one other item. I just wanted to pass out to the board quickly. The... Kind of to Dallas's point earlier today, some of the numbers that are getting out there and whether or not they're accurate or not. So, I did want to just print off the one page from the district report card for 2015, 2016 that shows both an expenditure... Spending per pupil calculation by the Ohio Department of Education, but also to show... They've graphed here classroom spending data to show for our district, for a comparison group, and statewide the percentage of our budget that is spent on classroom instruction versus non-classroom instruction. Because, again, there's often this notion that we are not in alignment with our peers or with the state averages in terms of the amount of money that we spend on instruction versus other areas of the operation. So, you'll see here that the district spends 68 percent. This is for 1516, Ohio Department of Education report card. So, if anyone from the audience were to go out to Ohio Department of Education website, click on the Financial Data tab on the report card for 1516, it will take you right to the schedule where you'll be able to see these slides. But, again, 68 percent for the district. Our comparison group, 68.7 percent. And the statewide average is actually 67 percent. So, we're doing a little better than the statewide average in terms of the amount of money that we spend on classroom instruction. So, I... That's one of the things that gets a little bit buried in the report card. And so, I wanted to make sure that we lifted that up and made sure you saw that.
Do we have... Because I know when I was doing some diving into EMIS data, when I was looking at the... If someone took the... Our total budget, if you will, and then took that and divided it by our enrollment, that comes up with a number that's far higher than this.
Sure.
Have we examined, looking at... Basically, sort of breaking down, okay, if our budget is this, but these monies are flow-through dollars, these money... That'd be because the question of... question, the, one of the reports from this, you know, Dallas talking about apples and oranges, if I go by one set of data on ODE and purely divided by enrollment, we're spending 30 percent more than this number. Is there a way for us to come up with a one sheet that sort of explains how to get the, compare apples to apples versus apples and oranges?
We can do that. There is, there's actually a whole manual that Ohio Department of Education uses, their expenditure flow model, that shows how all the items that they put into their expenditure per pupil calculation.
Right.
But, we could pull out some of the major items. So, for example, the transportation costs, the tuition costs for the vouchers for Ed Choice and others are include, could be included in that calculation, as you described it, whereas they would not be included here.
Right.
And also, the state has finally come to the conclusion that it's a little costlier to educate special needs students, and, you know, they always gave a more weighted funding for that. Well, now, as they're reporting out the expenditures, they're also taking into account the weighting for the special needs population. So, that's reflected in the new numbers as well. So, it's difficult. There's always, as she said, an apples to oranges comparison that you really need to understand the numbers that you're looking at when you make comparisons.
And, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think even some of those numbers in the state includes the money we're spending on the facilities project. Yes or no?
Some do.
Okay.
In fact, Mr. Callender was sharing some numbers with me that he was able to see on the state website that did reflect some construction numbers as well, too. So, again, depending on where you're looking and what numbers you're pulling, you could be pulling wildly different numbers that may or may not have really anything to do with our actual spending in the classroom.
Yeah, again, because I was looking at this EMIS data, I'm like, some districts seem really high, then I realized they also had construction projects.
Correct.
Which inflated the numbers, which inflated, if you did a pure enrollment by numbers, gave an inflated cost or expenditure per pupil. So, if there's any way for you and the other Scott, new Scott, to come up with something that's very simple and easy to explain it, because I think a lot of folks are going to pull, you know, like I did, okay, state says this, here's your enrollment, divide those two numbers, boom, but there's so many other numbers in the overall. I mean, if Ron's talking about, you know, the numbers we have going to charter schools, if that's in our overall budget, but that never hits our kids, then that inflates that per pupil expenditure when you divide, when you do the math that way.
Right, correct.
Which is not the way you should do it, but there's nothing that we can do to stop people from doing bad math.
Correct. No, understood. And we will, as part of the popular annual financial report, we'll see if we can incorporate some of those comparisons so that it is a little clearer to people.
Just because you mentioned the popular annual report, would you just give a real brief what you're trying to do with them?
Mm-hmm, sure. Well, there is the, you know, we do the CAFER, which is the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, which is very detailed, very lengthy, and it actually, school districts operate on a cash basis of accounting all year long, every district does. That's how our numbers are reported to the Ohio Department of Education, that's how they do their calculations, that's how these numbers are derived that I shared with you tonight. But then, we are required to convert those once a year to generally accepted accounting principles and a modified accrual basis of accounting. And so, a lot of times, again, you'll get those apples to oranges comparisons where people try to take some cash basis numbers versus these GAAP basis numbers. So, we have the CAFER. I think it gives some good information, but it's definitely some detailed information and a little different. And the thought is that we will, once the audit period is finished, do what's known as a popular annual financial report, which is a very brief and succinct kind of a document that would make sense to a layperson, that we can send out to the community where they can kind of just draw some conclusions, see some of the bigger picture numbers. So, we will put that together. There are some specific criteria for that report, but there is some flexibility as well, and so, we'll kind of vet it through, yeah. We'll have lots of good graphs and some visuals. We will also vet that through the Lay Finance Committee and some members of the community who have expressed some interest in taking a look at that, Mr. Wilkinson, for example, and just try to make sure that what we're presenting is meaningful and easily understood by the community in terms of numbers.
I do mean to interrupt you, Jim, I didn't know you were going to say something.
No, I'm biting my tongue about some of this misinformation that, you know, you read about the graduation rates and how they've given certain treasures an F rating. Did you know that they actually rate the treasures A to R?
I didn't know that, but I guess that's...
Yeah, well, you were, and they talk about employees who, you know, haven't worked there for two school years in their, in the opposition. I mean, it's, it's a little, it's a little nutty. But, you know, this, you know, the people that are opposing the levy want to oppose the levy. And when they see a spending per pupil in the low to mid, you know, twenties, you know, per pupil versus the fifteen that, you know, I'm looking at here from the state, they of course are going to use the higher number, even when it's been explained to them that, you know, it's, what you're using is misleading, and they want to mislead. That's their, that's their intention, so, sorry.
Oh, no, you're fine. All right, thank you. Does anyone have anything else I didn't, don't want to cut you short? All right, then let me move on to the Board Presidents' Report.
Actually, Cal, one other thing.
Let me not move on to the Board Presidents' Report yet.
Okay, sorry. Okay, so, you left five-year forecasts.
Yes.
With us.
Yes.
As a new member of the Board, I mean, when do we have to vote on this for the, is it one time a year, is it twice a year?
We've actually had you voting on it every month now.
Okay.
So, you know, that, it used to be it was just twice a year, in October and in May, but we've included that as one of the monthly reports that you are actually approving, yes.
Okay, it's in the packet?
Correct.
And the explanation of the changes are in here, because this was just...
On the assumptions, correct.
This was just given to us, okay.
Yes. And so, really, as I said, the biggest change in this iteration of the forecast is the actual numbers for 2016 are included.
Okay.
And as we move forward, we will, we will, you know, do some updates with that, too. But I think we also will see a slight change in the, we saw an uptick in the Ed Choice vouchers over and above what we might have anticipated in previous forecasts, so you're going to see that change in the forecast as well, and some of the property tax issues that we have going on in terms of, in particular Kaiser at Severance, and that being tax exempt and losing some dollars there. So, those things are included in the assumptions of five-year forecast, and this five-year forecast specifically will be put out on the district website and submitted to the Ohio Department of Education and be available to residents there.
Okay.
Do you need us to explicitly vote on it this month? Because I don't think it's in there.
No.
All right, that's fine.
Well, I didn't see it in the agenda, but, I mean, I think it does get voted on, I know that, but I want to, I need the opportunity to review it.
No worries.
And ask questions before we can do that, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, now I'll move on to the Board Presidents' Report. So, at sundown today ended the Jewish New Year, and I only bring that up because I want to make an apology, a personal apology, actually. One of the things, and I'll go into this a tiny bit more afterward, one of the things we're trying to do in order to disseminate more information, better information, is we've created two Teletown Halls, which are phone, essentially phone town halls, if you will. One of them was originally scheduled for this evening at six o'clock. I was aware of it being scheduled at six o'clock. I knew that today was the second day of Rosh Hashanah, I actually observed both days of Rosh Hashanah. Frankly, over the years, I thought I was one of the very few who did, and I didn't really give it enough thought. And so, thank you to Dr. Dixon, and thank you to the district. They moved that date from tonight at six o'clock to October 13th, because we realized many of the people who might, from the community, who might want to be involved in it, wouldn't have been able to be involved in it, and we didn't want to be disrespectful. But I do want to make it very clear that that error lies on my shoulders completely, because I had the power and the knowledge to stop that early on, and I didn't until very late, so thank you for correcting my mistake, so. But I also wanted, so, going on to the next, about the New Year, again, the New Year for me personally, and maybe it's sort of a traditional type thing, is a time of introspection and trying to look at what you really see when you look in the mirror. So, again, I'm not trying to get into any religious discussions, but I really just want to say it in terms of the school districts. So, if we want to look in the mirror a little bit more, and sort of look in the mirror based on the lens we looked through tonight, it's sort of an interesting thing to look at. And I'm going to start with something you haven't heard yet tonight. There's, tomorrow night is the Northeast Ohio, Ohio School Board Association Executive Committee meet, I'm sorry, it's the Northeast Ohio, Ohio School Board Association meeting, and at that meeting, we're going to have two honorees. First of all, Mr. Register. And Mr. Register is being honored as an outstanding school board member. You might remember a few months back, we decided to nominate him, and he, in fact, has been chosen, so we, it says right here, this award is to honor those board members who demonstrate outstanding boardmanship, hard work, and service to public education, and in all my years and all my fellow board members, and there have been a lot, it seems like, I can think of no one who deserves this more than you. And so, I'd like to congratulate him, so.
Thank you.
And also, the other honoree is actually is one of our schools, and that is Canterbury School, and I'm sort of sorry they left, I probably should have snagged them before they left. They will be honored tomorrow night by the Northeast Region as a School of Promise, so Erica Wigtin will be with us tomorrow night, and so, again, let's, in their absence, let's congratulate them as well. But again, sort of going back to looking through the lens, we get so involved, and as we talked about, Ms. Schubert, when she came to speak, and she, her frustration, because oftentimes when there's a contentious issue, everyone gets so polarized and so involved in the, in their part of proving their side of the issue, they forget what we, the things we do. Tonight, we saw a number of teachers, master teachers, think of the extra time they put in. Not only do we have new master teachers, but people who renewed, which means they not only put in the time, but they put in the time again in order to be the highest quality in their profession that they can be. We heard about this national recognition for our focus on minority students in AP courses. Again, I don't know how many honorees there were, but on a national basis, my senses were in a very, very small number of honorees. Even what Mr. Gainer was talking about, about, so we were criticized for, the CAFER, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, which we've been criticized for, but it has gotten awards for how many years in a row now? And I don't know if we officially congratulated you as well for that, once again, it's the, how many?
Sixteen.
Sixteen, so that's almost as old as I am. So, that's, it's a fabulous feather in our cap, but we're trying to take it to the next level. It's true, it's not digestible for most people. I mean, it's not something you sit down and read at night unless you're trying to fall asleep. So, instead, now you're doing a report that would be much more digestible to the community and make it so people can actually read, and if they're interested in looking for facts, then they'll hear it. And so, we were recently criticized for having these Teletown Halls that we're having. And, again, why are we having them? We're having them because we're trying our best to address an issue that people have had with us, which is, you're not communicating to us, you're not, you're not coming up with new ways to reach new people. We are trying our best to give information, factual information, about what, how this district works, because what our focus is, has always been, and will always be, is to educate the students of this community. And so, so again, I mean, I think for, it's a New Year's look in the mirror, and I want to say thank you to the district for all the work in those areas as well, so. All right, so with that, I can move on. Any unfinished business? Any new business? Everybody wants to go home. Board Committee Reports, we'll look this way first. Anybody? Either one of you?
Okay, Cleveland Heights Master Planning Committee, they haven't had any meetings lately. They have one coming up, which means I'll miss the next FAC meeting. My apologies and condolences for not attending, but again, I will reiterate that Cleveland, there's a lot of really good stuff in what the county people have been coming up with, and I would again encourage everyone, anyone who has the ear of a member of council, to encourage them to, when it gets a little bit further down line, not do it one at a time, but implement as much as soon as possible, because there's some really good stuff in there. University Heights Recreation Committee, of which I'm a member, hasn't met in, I don't know how long, because they haven't had any meetings. I will defer to Mr. Zucker if he wants to give a report on the last FAC meeting.
Sure, I'll let you go first, finish your first one.
And then the Alumni Foundation, a bunch of stuff there, the, because they actually have meetings. The next Heights Gear Sale is October 22nd, lots of stuff on sale. The Alumni Foundation's having their annual cocktail party at The Wine Spot on November 10th from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. You'll be able to buy tickets soon here, because the treasurer's nice enough to have an envelope for those. And hopefully, that will also be a levy victory party, too. The next newsletter is going in the mail right now, and you saw this evening, the first of three donations from, towards the clock tower, so their foundation is doing an unwinding of its investments, because they don't have $100,000 sitting in a bag anywhere, so they have to unwind the investments, so they'll have another check in two weeks, and then another one first of the year. And they're also going to be launching, we had a lot of inquiries about, there were pavers in the courtyard, so a lot of people were like, hey, what do you do with the old pavers? Well, they're going to go back in the new courtyard, or the quadrangle, if you will, but there's going to, we have to put the old ones back in, so the idea was, hey, let's take the opportunity to do a new paver campaign, so that'll be coming out in the next newsletter as well, and expect details on the foundation website. So, those are my four reports.
Did you have something?
I'm good.
All right, good. So, I think last meeting, last regular meeting, I mentioned that the University of Heights was having a technology meeting, and that was postponed, so we're going to have that later. We did, in fact, meet with the City of University Heights, I think, since the last meeting? I think so. So, and that was a productive meeting to discuss all types of topics. The, I was the stand-in for the Facilities Accountability Committee meeting.
Thank you.
You're welcome, you're welcome, and you had good reason. So, and actually, it was a really interesting meeting. The first thing, just to report to you, is that Alyssa Bray resigned, so there's one more resignation on the, I believe that's three people now that aren't on the committee. The FAC did express some desire to fill back out some of those slots, but they left it in our hands, so we, it is our decision, you know, whether or not, and if so, how to do that. They mentioned points of, what they call points of accountability, so they, they're going to present us with two points of accountability. They actually, I have them here, but I told them to send them along, so when they send them, I can formally, we can formally put them out. But you, I think Mr. Posh was the one who reported that they, the methodology they're using for, for their points of accountability is they, they have a, something that they decided as an issue or something to look at, they look at it in detail, and then they give us a, you know, a stoplight rating of green, yellow, or red, you can imagine which is best and which is worst. So, and they certify that ADA compliance is optimized for the entire Phase One of the master facilities plan. We have a green rating, and there's a, there's a whole report that goes with it, and again, I'm sure that they'll be sending along. And then the point of accountability communication, that grade is a red so far, so they are going to present that to us. They had, there was some discussion surrounding that, but we will, we'll look at that, and we'll decide what we, you know, what we should or shouldn't do associated with that. There was some level of frustration, I guess is probably a fair way to characterize it. And I think in part, I think the FAC would like to know what the charge would be going forward. You know, we have, as we're moving, if we're finishing with the high school phase, going into the middle school phase, if you remember the original charge, it really was only for the high school. So, we made no promises of what that was going to be, they just wanted to make sure that we were aware that there is some angst surrounding that. So, I think, I don't think that's for this meeting tonight, but I think that's, that's something that we need to discuss as a Board, what do we want to do? You know, is it a whole new committee? Is it that same committee? Is it end? I mean, we can make those choices, and they, to their credit, they did understand that that falls in our purview completely.
I think according to the original charge chart, or whatever you want, we're coming up on a decision date.
End of the year.
So, we, I think we do need, because I know we're going to get, start, you know, December ends up being a write-off, because this...
Right.
And so, I think we really need to carve out and set up some time to figure out exactly what we want to do with that.
Sure.
As well as, I know they're giving us sort of this drip, this bit by bit on their reports, I think what we should do is, once they have all of their reports, okay, have us take a look at them, and then have them come and explain, okay, you know, I think it's better to have a dialogue versus just reading, because I think, I think some of those, like the communications one, I hate to say be a small ass, but now that there's these banners outside of the high school, that may move in their mind's eye from a yellow to, from a red to a yellow.
Right.
So, I think some of those may actually have changed as well.
I think it should be, I'm glad you just said that, because I think, one thing to be clear about, one of their major points about the communication was the importance of communicating to the public exactly what's going on. And so, at one point, we'd had the banners out, and then we had to take those down, and they saw that as a huge negative. That was explained, why that happened, but still, that, this report was written before that. So, I think, I think in terms of communication, the major thing they're saying is, how are we disseminating what's going on at high school to the community? I think personally, that what had happened tonight with the pictures at the board meeting, this is going on, that's, that in itself is a point of communication, so, but again, I don't want to go too deep into this, because I just want to be sure, I'm glad you said, because I, communication's such a broad topic, it could have meant the way we spoke to them directly, or whatever, and I think they're much more talking about communication.
I think if we can get a sense of, okay, when can we expect the last of these reports? So, then when we have all of those reports, then we could have them come, you know, Siku and the rest of the committee come, we have it, and we can say, okay, explain, you know, a little bit more. Again, also, has, have any of these changed since, you know, by the time we actually have them present to us? It will have been a few months since the first of those was done, maybe that rating has changed.
Right, right. And just to be fair, there was, there were a couple of audience participants, and one of the criticisms that they heard was in the way that the budget was being reported to them, that it, that it was, that the numbers did not look correct, didn't look real. And actually, the head of the Budget Subcommittee pushed back on that, and I thought did an outstanding job of saying why, he actually thought this was much more telling, the way the numbers were being reported. So, again, it, that probably could fall under the matter of opinion type thing, but I did think that his explanation was excellent, and showed that he had a full comprehension of what the numbers meant, and that's what the point is. So, anyway, it was a very productive meeting, they're doing a good job, so.
So, if we have to sort of make a decision by the December timeframe of when, of how the FAC is going to be moving onward, I mean, we need to have some public discussion about that, or we put together a Subcommittee that reports back to the Board. I mean, is there, it seems to me, and I think one of the values of you attending the last meeting is, you know, these are meetings that Eric has been attending, and then I was attending, and then Nancy, you know, but before that, you know, I think we need, I think, you know, Board leadership needs to sort of figure out, you know, when does this get, you know, tucked into the agenda? I mean, and I'm saying that because I'd like to know the dates, I'd like to know what I can report back to the FAC in the next meeting that they have. I mean, they've met a lot of times, they've put a lot of effort into what they do, and I think we owe it to figure out how they're included in the process, you know, going forward or not, and then where the middle schools fit in, because we still have a good nine months of the project to go after December of this year.
Right. But, and again, you're right, inasmuch also as we, the decision originally was to create this committee for the high schools, we have to actually decide whether or not we want it to go forward with the middle school. I'm not suggesting by that that we don't, I'm just saying that that's part of the decision. But I think we could discuss with, come up with a date with the Superintendent, and, you know, when we can have this discussion further is probably the best way to go. One misstatement that I heard in the meeting was that the, someone referenced what's on the website in terms of the process and talked about that as policy. That is not policy, just because it's a statement on the website. That is, that was the intended pathway of how we would do things. We are completely within our purview to change that at any point and to make decisions of how best to decide who is on that committee and what that committee's charge is, so that's, it's not, correct me if I'm wrong, please. It is not policy.
Well, I mean, one of the things, though, that, I mean, I think we need to keep in mind, and it's probably the most important thing, is when the bond issue was passed, one of the things that was, you know, laid out by the folks that were working on getting this passed was, there would be a bond accountability, which is the FAC, and that needs to be, I mean, that's, that's an important piece going forward, whether that's the FAC, whether it's a different style. I mean, I think one of the issues is, we gave the FAC some resources, hey, look, just do it, and I think up until this year, we've never really seen, you know, good reports back. I mean, we've all seen what they've sent us in the red, amber, green format, you know, that's exactly what they should be doing, and when they put together the, I mean, disagree with the communications piece, but it creates a great dialogue, okay? Whether I agree with it or not, frankly, it doesn't matter if I agree with it, but, I mean, here are some thoughts that, and concerns that are, that are brought forward. I think, if you read the narrative, and the narratives are important, we've addressed them all, but I think we need to sort of figure out, and maybe whatever we're going to do, we give this, this new entity, or we continue with the FAC, we give them a little bit more guidance on really what we're specifically looking for, like a report back in timeframes, when reports are expected.
Well, there's, I think there's two things. One is that, as Jim mentioned, the original intention was a bond accountability committee. intention was a bond accountability committee. I think the reason why we pivoted over to Facilities Accountability Committee was because there was a number of very specific things that we said, these are things we're going to do, or we want, we want to do on the project, which became sort of those nine or twelve, or however you slice it, items. Now, the flip side is, I think going forward, and again, going to, we have another, at least nine months left, another year on the high school project, is that the lion's share of those very specific items are high school related. As such, when we go back through, look at those, only a few of those carry over onto the middle school project. So, again, just to plant the seed, we may want to have FAC and its sort of current charge go through till, let's say, December of next year, and then start thinking of, okay, how do we want to structure the middle school one?
Right. So, so I don't mean to cut either of you off, but let's, let's, we'll, we'll discuss a, a date or whatever, where we can get, actually have this discussion in, in more detail. And again, I appreciate the comments so far. I didn't mean to-
No, again, I mean, and it should be something that's noticed and everything like that, obviously.
Oh, of course.
So you're right, yeah.
We'll probably notice that meeting, like we do everything.
I think it's just a matter of, in my opinion, just, okay, fine, when are we going to put on the schedule? Or, as I always say, I'd rather have lots of short meetings than really long ones, because then I get a bad headache. So, just as long as we do, I think as long as we have it, we do it probably before December is the, the key, because we have to.
We'll discuss it. So, no other committee reports? All right. Announcements, correspondence announcements, any?
Great comeback by the football team.
Yeah.
What is it, four and two now?
That's right.
That's right, yeah.
Four and two?
And then Thursday night, if you need something to do-
Oh, yeah.
Garrity will have their third graduation for the three through five year, third through fifth graders. Their college graduation at John Carroll.
Wow.
So if you recall, just something that Katrina Hicks started three years ago. Six o'clock. And I forgot, one of the colleges I know they chose this time was Bowling Green. So the, each grade chooses a college, and she actually takes them through the entire ceremony. They have caps and gowns, and reeleys, so they can start off knowing, knowing what the graduation ceremony looks like and feels like. And so really excited to participate again this year to watch it. It's phenomenal. So that's Thursday night, John Carroll.
That's great. Thanks for telling us. Anything else? Then I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Gainer.
Mr. Posh.
Yes.
Mr. Register.
Yes.
Mr. Silverman.
Yes.
Mr. Ray.
Yes.
Mr. Zucker.
Yes. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Yeah.